In order of 14:00. Line up your phones. We stand for first meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
Motion made in seconds for the biggest. I. Okay, we'll move on down to old business. Ordinance number eight, seven, four. In order to find any withdrawal of annexed property from the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. Dave?
Yes.
You guys want to? I've got the ordinance here. So.
Go ahead.
So go ahead.
So Craig Foster is the chairperson for the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District. And he's going to explain what that is and what we do. I, we have a fairly new board of council members. And we request express to our relationship with the Town of Lakeview and the Town of Lakeview Fire Department. And I'd like to hand these out. And so we just got some, little bit of business to talk about. And Craig is going to just enlighten you on everything you want to know.
I'm not sure. How many of the new council members are familiar with the Rural Fire Protection District? Lakeview Rural runs from south, about halfway to the pine creek, to South Ascot Stewart's house. North to the Poppy Fisk Hills. West to town, out to not quite to New Idaho Roads. And then east up to Resort Town. Okay? For a tax in district, for a fire protection district, for a tax in district. And in the early seventies, Lakeview Rural and the Town of Lakeview signed a fire protection agreement that basically shares resources between Town of Lakeview and Lakeview Rural. In that agreement, seventy percent of our tax proceeds go to the, to the town to provide a shared position for a fire chief, a volunteer fire department. We have a bunch of equipment that's housed here. Some of it's housed at the fire station up on Bowers Street, which we built five years ago, or five years ago. But to basically share a fire department, and we share a volunteer fire resource, okay? And, and to do that, seventy percent of our tax returns go to the town. We retain thirty percent to do some new fires station north and south. We've, we've got plans to build another one south of town, wanting to get the money together. So that the people in the district drop from insurance level eight down to insurance level four, which is a big deal on your fire insurance. That's a lot of money for annual insurance rates if you're down to four. So. Anyway. What this packet we handed you was, was it shows you the, the money that's either going to the town or has gone to the town the last couple of years. Part of this fire protection agreement. It's been updated several times since the seventies. The most recent update, others with some house cleaning in 2020, was in 2013. Fire Protection District and the town got sideways with each other on annexation. And to not go through all of that. Developed on page, I was thinking the last page, there's a plot, a section in here about annexation.
This is the last page in the handout.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, the last page in the handout, that's right. So the annexation language basically says that when the town annexes the property for five years after the annexation is approved, the money that would have come to the Fire Protection District will keep for five years. We reduce our payment to the town by the, by thirty percent of that amount. The seventy percent still goes for five years and then it just rolls out, okay? That language is, without getting too deep into the weeds unless you really want to, is a negotiated truth from previous boards and previous town managers. Okay? It's working out well now with the annexation of, of specific fine and property to the north. You can see when, when Red Rock was annexed. If you go back to page one, there are Red Rock and some other little properties that we reduced the payment twenty-six hundred dollars. And we'll do that for three more years to Red Rock, actually. And then we'll add in the, the, the north property that gets annexed. And, and then after five years, we'll go back to the full seventy percent of taxes. Okay? What we're going to do with that money is we're going to continue to use that to get it or, you know, build a new fire station, upgrade, or build new equipment. Dennis and the guys need something, you know, that's specific to Fire Protection District. Those are our operating costs. Okay? And so that's what, that's what we're doing with the money. Okay? So that's a little bit about the Lakeview Rural. And how the annexation process works through the languages in the Fire Protection District. We can answer any questions if you have them.
To kind of help explain some of this, it might be our goal, we may eventually just work ourselves out of the district. And it all might all become Town of Lakeview. But at the time, at, at the time of our living in, there was a void. And these people were not getting a good insurance break on it. And that's why this district came into play. And then, so when the town keeps growing, like Red Rock and then the man camp area west, and now we're looking at this area.
Well, yeah.
So our district refund, our district source assessed values keep shrinking and dwindling, and yours keeps growing, and we don't have a problem with that. It's just, this is how we balance the scale and try to do that. And, you know, maybe someday down the road, this will get refigured. We may just, you know, our tax levy may roll into something else. But right now, we're trying to get starts for money and work with it. Basically, we're just an equipment holder and you guys are the manpower. And, and so your, your fire department fights all of our fires. We don't have a void on the, on the table.
How many volunteers do you have?
Zero.
How many volunteers do you have?
Twenty.
Eight.
It's all on you guys, nine are specifically this.
No, they, we, we work for the town, who they contract with the town and we cover with our personnel. We do mostly minor maintenance and stuff on all of their rigs and stuff like that. If there's anything major, then it comes out of, I believe it still comes out, right guys?
Yeah.
But basically, we're on loan to them or on hire to Rural Fire Department.
That's some of your equipment, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of the equipment that's out, either out here in the shop or, or up north, is Lakeview Rural's equipment. Is there anything that's?
We've, we've got one city engine up north.
Okay. So it's a, it's all a real combined thing. And, you know, we pay our part. The agreement is seventy percent of our tax revenues every year go, go to the town to, onto our part of, of the whole program. Yeah, we've got, I don't know, ten, twelve, I don't have the equipment list, but we had ten or twelve pieces of equipment. Yeah, and, and, you know, if, if Dennis, you know, if we have a major big puff blowout on our fire engine, then we pay for it. Okay? That's just maybe, that doesn't come out of the seventy percent.
We've got a good relationship with Dennis and he's been a great partner to work with and fire department. We've had no problems at all. We had a good fire last year in the force of this Ranger District down across from Hunters. And that's in our district. And Dennis responded to it and they had mutual aid from Thomas Creek Westside that came in and helped with it also. They work together. We have some extra tinder, we have an extra pumper truck. And that enhances his, your fleet for the fires. So our equipment will roll on a town fire. Whatever Dennis prescribes, that's what they'll get and they'll do. We all kind of, it, it helps build a better group altogether. We stand together now.
I think it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Well, you know, it helps having those other engines. We've got four engines now. We've got three engines that sit here in the bay. One belongs to the volunteer, it's volunteer owned. One belongs to the Rural Fire Department, one belongs to the city. And then we've got another city backup engine out at the north station. To have that station be viable, it has to have an engine that's got all the necessary equipment on it to even call it a fire station. And by, if it has all that, then anybody within five miles of that station, it doesn't matter whether they're in our district, Thomas Creek Westside or whatever, but their insurance rates will go down significantly within five miles of that.
And something we're working on now is we drilled a new well out at the north fire station. They've come out quite quick, wanted theoretically the well girl is going to be here last Wednesday. Okay, we're well drilling. When he gets here, hopefully we'll get that figured out. So we've got two hundred and fifty gallons a minute, which will fill a tinder pretty fast.
Our goal is to, we'll fill a four thousand dollar tinder in fifteen minutes. That's a huge problem.
So that's turnaround for, you know, and we've got mutual aid agreements with everybody. You've got mutual aid agreements with everybody. And so, you know, clean fire, everybody showed up. And so hopefully we get the well fixed before very much longer.
We've got sixty K in the hole.
That's early.
Yeah.
And that, that well up there, I mean, it's going to benefit the O L M.
But let me know, when we finally get it working, that, that blue cap on top, paint that. Yeah. So anyway, that's a real Fire Protection District and the relationship with the town and how annexation works. Annexation used to be a very strenuous, a very confrontational thing. And it's not. The fact that David sit here and say, you know, you've got to annex this, it makes perfect sense, we're all right with it, is because of this language.
Yeah. And, and my, my job dovetails well into what I'm doing, calculating that. It's easy for me to, I know what it is, it's easy for me to calculate, it's easy to pull out. So it's a slam dunk for me. And on this handout, the first page is what we agreed and I, we presented Michelle with a check in this top copy here. And you see on the bottom, this is updated on six, one, twenty-one. That's, that's what we'll fill in when we, because of the top, it's sort of estimated collection of revenue is eighty thousand, seven hundred. We don't collect a hundred percent, we collect around ninety-nine point six percent on time of manner. And so we'll pay what we collect on, by June thirtieth. And, and at that time, when we get ready to pay, we'll pay that. And then also I'll calculate that little bit difference in the annexation for the, we only got like five properties going in on the north end up there. So I'll get that calculated. But that, that's a, that's a mechanical thing that I work out with Michelle. And I'm very transparent with her on that. So we've got a good relationship going that way. Anyway, my desire to introduce you guys to us and better explain our relationship on how these two fire departments work, and how the money flows and kind of put it in perspective. So when somebody talks about Lakeview Fire Protection and our equipment and your money and vice versa, that's what it's kind of like.
Anybody have any questions? We really can't vote on this until the next meeting.
No, we're, we're done until we get the chief for our, for our perspective.
This is, we need numbers.
Yeah.
You know what we're doing? Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for making it all work out. I live in a tax in district and so does pause. And the savings of our insurance, the northern offsets, we can reset. It's a win-win for everybody.
I know when the fire district first started, Jerry Berry was on the fire department. And he said by the time they got it all said and done, he put two hundred dollars back in the pot.
No.
It's more than that today.
Yeah, it's more than that today. But back then, they were a ten and dropped to eight.
When you guys dropped to a four, what did it go down to, Paul? Or how much did you save? Because I haven't really.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I don't need the family finances.
I can tell you what I saved. And because we noticed quite, ours was about seventy bucks a year. So, because we're on, we actually have Thomas Creek and Lakeview, we're a town in town. Our homeowners, I barely paid five hundred bucks a year, which to me is a steal. I didn't pay that for twenty-five years for a similar house.
We got one house that's up on Old Smokey Road. Ten years ago, I tried to get him to join the fire district. Because we got people to the north are in the fire district, people to the south, and they're a little island. One of the nicer houses out there. They chose not to do that. They would rather spend their money through their insurance and have their insurance pay up ten thousand dollars for us to fight their fire. But we can't guarantee that we're going to go out there to the fire. Because if something else happens in town, then our district's liable for that, or the town's liable for it. I keep thinking, once we got down to a four, that she would ought to join the district. But she still chose not to.
It's a big price difference.
It's a big difference.
We were looking at property out of town and the homeowners alone was one of the property taxes. There's two thousand dollars a year for homeowners. And property taxes are on eight hundred compared to like twenty-eight hundred. But, I mean, it kind of offset each other. Even at two thousand dollars, and that was stopping as we go out.
Yeah. It's spending. If you compare, we're not, we're at the highest level, we're at level ten. And some are like, like just built somewhere like, it's half the size of the house in Lakeview. And, and the insurance rate's exactly the same. Okay? It's, it's eleven hundred bucks a year for homeowners insurance on half the, half the square.
So for taxes, if you live inside the city with us and set level one, you're going to pay close to nineteen dollars per thousand assessed value in taxes. If you live in the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District, you're going to pay about fourteen dollars per thousand in taxes. Because you don't have some of the city services. If you live outside of our district, farther north, toward the falls and say, you're going to pay twelve dollars per thousand. So that's, you see how the tax of assessed value, that's kind of how that breaks out. Clear?
You know, when we went to the L C P meeting, you said the taxes were around fourteen, thirteen to fourteen million?
That's, thirteen million is our total gross revenue from all assessment countywide.
Right. And so out of that, we get seven hundred and seventy-five thousand? That one sheet you gave us? Okay. I just.
But the majority of the residents live out of town. And we have what, eighty-five hundred residents roughly?
But the rest, the rest of the, the money goes to county roads and all that stuff? All that?
Well, we could split hairs a long ways on this thing, so.
Well, I don't want to take up a whole meat thing.
Yeah.
It could be a conversation. I just.
The Town of Lakeview, and I don't have this year's, I pulled it out and gave it to a guy and I forgot what he finished. But the year before last, in twenty-twenty, the revenue for the Town of Lakeview at a hundred percent collection was seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And that went well for twenty-twenty-one. Because the assessed value went up because the housing market was going nuts. So, okay.
Is that, is it a percentage all the time we get?
I'm sure what.
Is it a percentage all the time we get?
So.
I mean, how do you figure that out? Do we just ask for more money? Is that what we do? I mean, no.
So you, you've heard of bonds and levers.
Right.
A bond is a fixed number that pays off in a specific amount of time. So if I wanted to build a fire hall, I would go get a bond to build a fire hall. So if I needed five hundred thousand to make the building, I'd get a bond for twenty years, I'd have to do that. If I want to operate that fire station and pay for my staff, I get an operating levy. Levis go on forever, okay, until they're voted out. A bond goes until that bond payment's paid out, just like our hospital has a bond for the remodel, that'll pay out. And then you have these operating levies. So people get bonds and levies kind of mixed up. So the town has a levy and it's been a fixed rate levy for a long time. And in order to increase that, you'd have to go for voter approval, which would be tough to fly these days.
Right.
And, and to be real specific, I can tell you what that rate is. The Town of Lakeview is getting six point five four three seven. Six dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand is going towards the Town of Lakeview. So then you say, well, Dave, how much is, is, is the county getting here, or commissioner here? And the county is getting, oh, little on there. Three dollars and seventy-six cents. So you say, well, it's a smaller number, but if you look at where the county is drawing off countywide and your six bucks is off the Town of Lakeview. So that's, that's the difference.
Not one time that goes through, so. Not one time that goes through, so.
No. I was just, yeah, there's, did I say that?
No.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so no road money is paid by property taxes. That's a big rub I have in mind, because people come in, oh, I paid my taxes, my road is crap. Well.
It doesn't come from there, yes.
Slowed out.
Anyway, that's another fight for another story. We wanted, we wanted just to clear the air and educate you guys about a fire district and how the mechanics work.
And my concern actually was, because I live the worst part of the annexation battle. It was the first term I was on. I don't ever want to factor that in. And I don't know, maybe with the new council members and heard any about those battles, but it's working. It's working good. We want to keep it.
We want to be very transparent and upfront.
Okay. Way to move on down to Dave on mapping?
Okay. So I, I got thrown on the bus at work on a couple different things, so I didn't get to put together a handout. So before I even start in on this, I'm getting the cart possibly before the horse. But I'm trying to generate a, I'm trying to generate a scenario that I can take to the commissioners with some other folks from the county, Darwin Johnson and some others. So we want to try to encourage the commissioners to, to look into doing that. And that is a G I S photographer position. Now, we're a small county and we subcontract out all of our mapping. And we've had the state of Oregon do it, and they were terribly slow and had lots of errors. Then we had Lake County do it. And they were a little quicker and had less errors, still had more stuff. And then when I took office, we switched to the Chutes County. And now we're getting about a three or four week turnaround with the state of Oregon. We were out about six months to a year. And with Lake County, we're out about two or three months. And now we're out four to six weeks. So we're getting, we're getting a better service and we're having less errors. And so we're subcontracting with a, a G I S mapping person. And it would be nice to see somebody in county for multiple reasons. One, we recreate position that would put up somebody to work in Lakeview, which would be good, instead of sending our Lakeview money out of town. Two, it would open the door for more projects to be done on a local basis. And Darwin's going to touch on that in just, just a moment, about what this would benefit us. So talking nuts and bolts, I have not prevented, presented this to James, nor Mark, nor Barry. We're trying to get all of our facts together so that when we do come to the commissioners, we can say that we would like to do this and we would like to partner with the Town of Lakeview. I know that if we do that, our big tie would be with this Mr. Scott Lutley and the nine-one-one. And I'm going to go into that in just a minute. So as far as looking at resources, I've, I've gone around and talked. We're, the county currently spending about twenty-seven thousand dollars annually in G I S mapping and photography work that we're sending out of town. And the, the Town of Lakeview through E S, EMS and nine-one-one is spending, and if I correct, it's thirty thousand dollars annually, or seventy-five hundred dollars a quarter with a geosol, which I think is based out of Albany.
It's GeoCom, it's now a multi, it's like Airbus, it's a big vehicle.
Yeah, it's been a changing product. And, and their resource stream has been shrinking like crazy. You used to get close to sixty thousand dollars a year, now it's down to thirty. And that number's changing. And Scott can describe that scenario a few more. But currently, that's what, that's what you guys are spending every, every year, is thirty K to them. So if you took your thirty and our twenty-seven, we're getting close. And we kind of tied it in with some other things, we might be able to get close to make it personal, to make it make sense for us. We've had some different commissioner leadership. This is actually the third time I've tried to pitch this. And we get close and then it doesn't make sense and it just kind of goes away. So I talked to, it would be a county employee. And Scott has been very, very sensitive to the fact that not really wanting to marry with the county from some previous bad blood and some things like that. And I've been trying to create a scenario that would make sense for all the players involved. And if, if they brought to the table their contract of thirty thousand dollars, if they would have ownership in that as far as a priority. So when the address teams come in, that would, you know, it's not that they're a second class citizen and they're one of the town and they can't wait till the county workers done it. So it would make sense for everybody to make it all pull together. Anyway, I talked to Jay Collins and to create a position and to fund it with all the overhead payroll taxes and the furs and the health insurance and workman's comp and workman benefit and all the perks that go with it. It's about a ninety-four thousand dollar a year position. And so that's the nut we're trying to cover with our resources that we have. So obviously, if you did the quick math, your thirty and our twenty-seven doesn't make ninety-four. But there's some other opportunities maybe coming forward in the county that may make it make sense. And I'm trying to do that. We have, I won't go into a lot of details, but that looks like it's coming forward. I've also ran down some of the costs of what it's going to take mechanically to make it work. We have an aging plotter, it's black and white, and, and we bought it in two thousand and ten. And it's, it's functioning, but it's not as, it's not as happy as it should be. A new plotter, I, I, Scott quote from Cannon for seventeen K, I think we can get that closer to eleven K. I talked to our IT guy about a PC, because it takes a very powerful PC and print screens. Because we're doing ESremapping, that is a lot of, it's, you're moving, you've got a lot of parts moving in that. The cost of that's just a little south of two grand with the double screens and the, and all that equipment to make a workstation work for that person there. And so we have those upfront costs we have to be, be looking at also. Anyway, I'm going to turn this to Darwin, because he's going to talk to you about, he's very, very closely related to a photographer out of Hardy County that's been doing a lot of contract work for Art County in the past. He's very familiar with it. I'm not a photography king. If there's anybody in the office building that's more up on photography as him, I spend more stuff. But mine's really basic wall line adjustments, partitions, that kind of stuff, so.
Well, counsel, it's good to, um, thanks for letting us take the time to talk about G I S. As a counselor, I've talked about it a few times and just kind of spun the wheels a little bit, but. You know, the nine-on-one contract with GeoCom now is, is really one of the key components to make this thing work. And what, what the town gets from that now is really just the minimum required from that company, which is just straight reimbursement for the work they do to make sure addresses, roads and stuff like that gets put into the state system and, and, you know, able to be read by dispatch and all that information. So there's not a whole lot as for projects that, that, well, that already is covered. It's not coming anything like that. It's not coming anything like that. So, you know, if we're to build this position, you'd say, hey, what, what are we gonna get out of it? That, that thirty is, you know, you're not really getting a whole lot out of it anyway. It's, it's coming in and going out, so.
What did we figure out, did, or that the hourly rate?
Three sixteen.
What's that?
So that last quarter, his bill, they did, uh, their hourly rate from what they paid him, seventy-five hundred dollars, we worked out, a three and sixteen dollars an hour is what GeoCom charged the town of Lakeview to do the GIS work.
And, and, and we're using them as well, right? I mean, so GeoCom's covering all of the nine one one, um, addressing changes that happen. So I send them as address manager for the county as well. I'm sending them any new address that we add to the system. So there's, that's, that's something that, that, you know, we're outsourcing as, as they explain, you know, when we're getting mapping changes and stuff done. But what we're really, you know, trying to, to have, you know, this position for is to also do other projects that are important. Having, you know, really up-to-date information in the office, available to all department heads and, you know, staff that works on, let's say, water systems and, you know, you know, boundaries for these fire districts. Being able to see all this stuff, you know, in real time is, is important, especially with, you know, technology today. It's, it's available, it's just a matter of, you know, the cost, where is that at? And, um, right now, to be introduced to Greenwood Hardy County to, uh, put back online, similar to what Lake County was doing, where with Lake County is the GIS online mapping is available. And, uh, you're able to search, you know, bio number, name and account number, mapping tax law numbers. And then there's a number of layers that we, we've added on there. But, um, all this stuff, you know, zoning's actually on there right now for the town. Um, it's something that, uh, you know, hasn't been done until just recently. You know, uh, the ten years I've been here, zoning itself doesn't ever online, that's, that's now online. And it's helpful, I mean, it's snow load and things like that. I mean, there's, uh, all sorts of building options, uh, so. You know, when you're, when you talk about even fire districts and those maps and those boundaries and, you know, your eight, um, insurance agencies, you're gonna use stuff like that too, knowing, oh, how far are we from a fire hall or something? So it just, you know, when you, when you're planning and in that, like I am, I mean, it's, it's important to have. And so, um, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, uh, if this were to become a county position, which we're hopeful that it will at some point, uh, when we get all this, uh, that we're outsourcing back in. You, we'll just have to decide, you know, as, um, what cost do we want to share in this position? And then what, you know, projects do you think, um, you know, are realistic getting done and, you know, within a first year or, or moving forward? You know, Hardy County has contracts both with the city of Hines and the city of Burns, uh, and then also the tribe, which helps offset that cost. They've, they've gotten a really good rate, uh, from the county, in my opinion, over the years, at roughly five thousand a pop, um, which, you know, fifteen hundred isn't a whole lot. But it, but it helps, you know, anytime they need some work done, just go ask the GIS coordinator to get that done for you. So the similar thing could be arranged here where we'll, you know, how's that position in the county? And then we just, you know, if you need something, just come and ask for it and get put on the, uh, you know, priority list and get done as quickly as it needs to be done. So, um, you know, when you talk about, you know, annexations and stuff like that, you know, especially, you know, working with the assessor's office, you can kind of see, hey, what's the benefits to this? Tax-wise, it's, it's something really nice for noticing. Uh, I know, you know, we've come across incorrect noticing before and, and that, the problems that that creates, especially, um, when, when, you know, people find out about something that they should have found out about early on in the process and come in last minute, and we've had to have extra meetings and stuff because of that. So it just makes everything, um, you know, done, done correctly. I don't need to speak more about it. But if you got any questions, I'll, yeah. Scott?
Well, I can, you know, if we can make this work, and of course, you know, there's a, uh, there's exit plans, you know, that you can exit out of the program. But I could see the town could benefit, especially the utility department, like their main shut offs. In the summer, it's easy, but when there's two foot of snow and you, and you, you know, you get GPS on every shut off for every house and your mains. And so if you have a, a major, uh, eight-inch main blows up, they know exactly. Just get your GPS and say, it's right here, instead of digging up the whole intersection trying to find the, uh, shut off. And especially in residential, wintertime, you know, who knows where their meter is? Because the town doesn't read meters in the winter. And I shovel mine out, I, I know where mine is at. A lot of people don't. And we already have all the fire hydrants GPS in town. That was a project we did several years ago.
What that would look like is that for about a five thousand dollars, you can get a GPS handheld tool with a rolling map. And you can give it to your reader a few beers, and every time they go to that property, they pin it. They're standing right over there, they pin it. And that information will be downloaded as your coordinator, and they can, our coordinator would be doing it, be your, your maintenance guy while he's there, and then they could pin those and they could make a map of those. And what we're, this is all premature and, and, and I don't wanna get the cart before the horse, because this is not a done deal by any means. Yeah, but anyway, let's say, for instance, Jeff wanted to get that done, and it's a whole new project. I'm currently contracted with the Shute's County for seventy-five dollars an hour. So if you wanted to build a new project like that, we would say, okay, we would, we would, this person would work on it for seventy-five dollars an hour. And we would build that. And then, then later on, as little enhancements go along, it would be, you know, or something like that. Whatever that, that's gonna be a relationship between the county and then everyone work together that and we get down. But again, what I'm asking for today is after I leave, you guys talk together with Scott and see if, if it makes sense for you, if, if you say, yeah, we'll support this, if, if the county goes forward. So I can take that with me to the commissioners when Darwin and I and some others go before the board and, and, and present them with this and we'll say, yeah, the town of Lakeview is willing to do this. And this hasn't, this hasn't been, I mean, in the very first time we tried to it, Scott was not one with this suggestion at all, first with previous other problems. And, and I understand that, but we worked a lot of things out and tried to get some things worked out. So I get it. But anyway, that's kind of why I asked to be on the agenda, and I wanted to kind of talk that out a little bit.
So I've been doing GIS for the year since two thousand one, so I'm.
You're, you're writing it?
Yeah. So as far as usefulness, it, it's huge. I really see for the town especially, you know, you could look at your water lines and utilities and, and attribute them with the year that they were put in. And you can start looking at, okay, when we start rotating, you know, changing the lines out, that kind of stuff. You know, the streets, all that different stuff. I mean, there's, the possibilities are endless. That's why I see that there's a lot.
There's a lot like a market wave. When you have one, you don't know how you ever got by without it.
Yeah.
And a lot of that knowledge on where those water lines are is gonna go away. I mean, Jeff and some of his crew, you know, a lot of that stuff's just in their head. They know those lines will be here.
We can map all that stuff and then we can formulate a game plan as far as this is the age. You start rotating, putting new stuff in as they get to, you know, sunset and out. I mean, there's, there's a huge difference.
And those twenty years, you're not gonna have that knowledge base there to pull that off.
Uh, people go away. So, you know, your water mountable system's got different sections that are newer than older sections. You can identify those, get those identified, and then you can know your target, their work areas. That'll be great tool for you.
And you can keep track of repairs, and then you realize, okay, this area needs a little bit more attention. I mean, there's a lot of different stuff.
But it is a lot of good, a lot of good use, and I think it would make sense for everybody in this deal. But, um, you know, it's so early in the deal, um, and, and we're still quite a ways away from making enough, make a positive turn at the county level. But I, I think if we all work together, I think we can get close and get there.
You think you'd be able to resource that out instead of us contracting with the Shute's? Could somebody contract with us to help fund that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm careful about opening the door to that, because I don't wanna hold the burden. I want, if, if, if we get a group together that buys in on this and helps contribute to make this thing work, that's gonna be our primary, our primary people. And then once we kind of get our feet on the ground and get some experience behind this. It's just like, I am the only county in the state that's using the Shute's counties. Three other counties, when I heard I went all with the Shute's, reached out to them and tried to join on. And the Shute's said, no, we can't take it more. And so I, I get that kind of stuff. So anyway, it's just, uh, you know, I'm gonna retire in three and a half years, and I'm trying to.
Maybe.
I'm trying to leave it better than I found it, and I'm trying to set up the next assessor to be in a better position. And, and, um, I'm trying to get some things worked out. This is one of my bucket list things, is to try to get this resolved. I think it would be good for the county, I think it'd be good for everybody. Plus it brings another salary to life.
What do you think the feasibility of actually finding a qualified?
So, that's a very good question. And so, as everybody knows, when you live in a remote area and somebody comes to town with these qualifications and they're here for a year, and then their wife realizes Walmart's a hundred miles away and it snows, and then you indicated somebody brought them up to speed, by the time they get to hold their own weight, they pack up and go. We actually have had a camp, a strong candidate who was born and raised here, moved away of the very first time we tried to go, that was gonna be a great, strong candidate. And he got all dressed for the dance, and he didn't play the music, and so he didn't show. He's a possibility. We also have another person who was born and raised here, who is doing this exact same job in another area that has reached out and said they would like to relocate and come back home. And to me, that's like, yes. And so we do have a couple fish on, on the string a little bit. Because I wouldn't wanna read, read us down a, you know, now we've got the position, now we've got, you know. I have to be very, very careful, because we have to let the job out and interview and go through the process. We're not guaranteeing anything to anybody. And especially now, we don't have anything to offer anyway, because we, we don't even have a position. But, but yes, that's a good question, and we do have a couple people who have wanted to come back to Lakeview and make this their home and do this, and, and do this kind of thing.
That's good enough, that's, that's exactly my question. The uniqueness of Lakeview is not the appeal to the state, so.
Well, a lot of us live here for a lot of different reasons. And, you know, I have, my kids went to BIM, and I thought we'd never see them again. Down in the river and the mountain and the breweries and the old mecca up there. And between the attitude and the traffic and, and they're, they like to drive, we had to drive so far out to get away from people, we're almost back to Lakeview anyway. And then they're starting our kids in school, we've got a pretty good scholarship program, and there's no place like home. And, you know, I'm so tickled to have them come back.
We can discuss that with, with Scott.
So anyway, that's, I would just assume not be here when you have that conversation. You guys need to do that. This doesn't have to be a need by any chance, because there's no brush on this.
Okay.
But if you guys can reach back to me and say that we're favorable towards this or not favorable, and then we can take it to the next level to the commissioners and see how the folks is there. And then at that time, I'll have some more information to give to you as to what it's gonna look like.
So, but before we move on, and I just want to bring up these couple things. The main thing that we'd be asking is commitment to get in that exit clause, you know, language that you're currently on the contract. Uh, and it's a thirty-day, um, window that I, as I understand in the contract. So, you know, and then figuring out as, as a council, how much you'd be willing to contribute to the missing portion that, that, um, you know, that we still need to bring in to make this position happen. You know, I think that's roughly around thirty thousand is the missing portion, but obviously, county needs to bear some of that. And, you know, if you guys would bear some of it, then I think we could get, get to guess on, on making this thing happen. And, um, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, obviously, if this didn't work out, the, the negotiate, you know, definitely, I mean, it'll be a contract, it'll be something that we all need to feel happy each year moving forward. We all know, yeah, especially most that work with it, how important GIS is. And, you know, right now, we, there's so many projects not getting done that with this position could get done. And then we map out all this stuff. And, and then that history's there, and it's, it's in a map that's not gonna go away. A layer that's, that's created that, you know, we all benefit from.
But, you know, the GPS person is the guy behind the computer. Like if the town wanted their parents and, yeah, shut off, that's something that we can do. But the person, the GIS person is in the office, I mean, they don't go out in the field. They do, they do the computer stuff.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a surveyor, so don't pick them as a surveyor, okay? However, a GIS mapping person could take a little bit of burden off of your surveyor. In other words, instead of you having to do a bit of some resources, you could go to a, hope that mapping.
I don't want to set up another work session on this. And Scott, we'll let you know when it'll be.
Sure. Here at your pleasure.
You always love to go to.
After working at seventy-two hours here, yes.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks for listening to our sound.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, the next one is business origin, four thousand dollar loan for nine one one. Michelle?
Um, we're here so Scott and Dennis can show you what they need.
Oh, I didn't bring my packet. Did you have your?
No, you didn't have, I told you to bring it.
Nah. You just said there's gonna be me.
But you have understood. What's that? Packet of all the, you put it out. Do you know, I'll run that over to, to get mine from my.
Mine's in my basket there at work, or at the town hall. I can go over there.
I thought it, I thought it.
Wait, he.
Maybe you can do a show.
Really, I can leave.
You can do a show top?
I think Mayor Turner has it.
Yeah, I got it. I think I've got the right one.
It's like, it's like.
The one with the picture, yes.
Yeah, it should be like twenty pages. So why don't I take two at a time and go through the comm center and take a look at that?
I'll be back, but, um, what, what Dennis and Scott will do is like, Dennis will split you up and down, so half of you, what he's going through.
Oh, six on three two to start.
I, that's recorded.
Well, how many people are gonna be in here? Or is it four, four, two, one? Or is it?
Anyway, Scott gets the, gets that jury and puts it to you. Okay. And then it's Dennis taking two.
I'll do one.
We've left there.
Yeah, so which group do I follow?
Wherever you wanna go, buddy. Are you gonna bring your camera?
Technically, there's only two of us, so it's not even.
I have to follow the one technically that's public meeting.
They got the teaser trailer next door, right?
There's only gonna be two of us.
Wait, there's five total, so three? Oh, dang it.
We got teaser.
The what?
We got teaser today.
I think gyms would like to volunteer, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
The second day. No, actually, she has. He's more politically correct. He said, she said, that is true. Said, well, the second day could be worse.
Am I correct?
Yes, I'll put that up, I'll put that up.
And then also. We'll need C.
Swabs, oh, yeah?
Correct.
Don't be stealing my shit, Dave.
And we'll, I'll put, uh.
I thought that was the example. You're not a method. You did what? Followed the golf.
Anything else that you would like me to include? For that, I can speak more information or, or you just give the application?
Oh, I did, I have.
You should have it in your packets.
I just started the other day through your grand jury.
Now, from the next work session.
Yeah, it's good.
Five, three, one. The great work session.
You'll have to do it in April.
Then when we have two work sessions. It's on Friday, April sixteenth. Yep, that's when we change.
Okay, so we can, uh.
How late time? Six.
Six and one.
I'll have snacks.
Well, I'm not gonna read it right.
Okay.
You know why? Six and one.
I make mistakes.
On, uh, oh, sixteen, also seventeen.
You told me to do that, I just listened to you.
You told me to do that, I just listened to you.
Was that your fish, Mike? You're the one that said you was doing it to sixteen.
Well, we didn't have a meeting then.
That's true.
You guys can hash that out later.
Okay, do you have anything else? Well, the thing that you gotta sneak that to the, sort of, to the. Let Michelle know.
The, the clock's.
Four o'clock, either last or session.
Not till April sixteen, okay? The next regular company meeting is March thirteenth at four o'clock.
Okay. Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, well, we're adjourned, maybe that, oh, five, should be nine.